你好，这是我的新工作。
好的，我马上开始。
我今天的工作日志里有几条记录， 第一条是关于我昨天的作业。第二条是关于我今天的作业。第三条是关于我今天的作业。第四条是关于我昨天的作业。第五条是关于我今天的作业。第六条是关于我昨天的作业。第七条是关于我今天的作业。第八条是关于我昨天的作业。第九条是关于我今天的作业。第十条是关于我昨天的作业。第十一条是关于我昨天的作业。第十二条是关于我昨天的作业。第十三条是关于我昨天的作业。第十四条是关于我昨天的作业。第十五条是关于我昨天的作业。第十六条是关于我昨天的作业。第十七条是关于我昨天的作业。第十八条是关于我昨天的作业。第十九条是关于我昨天的作业。第二十条是关于我昨天的作业。第30条是关于我昨天的作业。第31条是关于我昨天的作业。第32条是关于我昨天的作业。第33条是关于我昨天的作业。第34条是关于我昨天的作业。第35条是关于我昨天的作业。第36条是关于我昨天的作业。第37条是关于我昨天的作业。第38条是关于我昨天的作业。第39条是关于我昨天的作业。第40条是关于我昨天的作业。第41条是关于我昨天的作业。第42条是关于我昨天的作业。第43条是关于我昨天的作业。第44条是关于我昨天的作业。第45条是关于我昨天的作业。第46条是关于我昨天的作业。第47条是关于我昨天的作业。第48条是关于我昨天的作业。第49条是关于我昨天的作业。第50条是关于我昨天的作业。第51条是关于我昨天的作业。第52条是关于我昨天的作业。第53条是关于我昨天的作业。第54条是关于我昨天的作业。第55条是关于我昨天的作业。第56条是关于我昨天的作业。第57条是关于我昨天的作业。第58条是关于我昨天的作业。第59条是关于我昨天的作业。第60条是关于我昨天的作业。第61条是关于我昨天的作业。第62条是关于我昨天的作业。第63条是关于我昨天的作业。第64条是关于我昨天的作业。第65条是关于我昨天的作业。第66条是关于我昨天的作业。第67条是关于我昨天的作业。第68条是关于我昨天的作业。第69条是关于我昨天的作业。第70条是关于我昨天的作业。第71条是关于我昨天的作业。第72条是关于我昨天的作业。第73条是关于我昨天的作业。第74条是关于我昨天的作业。第75条是关于我昨天的作业。第76条是关于我昨天的作业。第77条是关于我昨天的作业。第78条是关于我昨天的作业。第79条是关于我昨天的作业。第80条是关于我昨天的作业。第81条是关于我昨天的作业。第82条是关于我昨天的作业。第83条是关于我昨天的作业。第84条是关于我昨天的作业。第85条是关于我昨天的作业。第86条是关于我昨天的作业。第87条是关于我昨天的作业。第88条是关于我昨天的作业。第89条是关于我昨天的作业。第90条是关于我昨天的作业。第91条是关于我昨天的作业。第92条是关于我昨天的作业。第93条是关于我昨天的作业。第94条是关于我昨天的作业。第95条是关于我昨天的作业。第96条是关于我昨天的作业。第97条是关于我昨天的作业。第98条是关于我昨天的作业。第99条是关于我昨天的作业。第100条是关于我昨天的作业。第101条是关于我昨天的作业。第102条是关于我昨天的作业。第103条是关于我昨天的作业。第104条是关于我昨天的作业。第105条是关于我昨天的作业。第106条是关于我昨天的作业。第107条是关于我昨天的作业。第108条是关于我昨天的作业。第109条是关于我昨天的作业。第110条是关于我昨天的作业。第111条是关于我昨天的作业。第112条是关于我昨天的作业。第113条是关于我昨天的作业。第114条是关于我昨天的作业。第115条是关于我昨天的作业。第116条是关于我昨天的作业。第117条是关于我昨天的作业。第118条是关于我昨天的作业。第119条是关于我昨天的作业。第120条是关于我昨天的作业。第121条是关于我昨天的作业。第122条是关于我昨天的作业。第123条是关于我昨天的作业。第124条是关于我昨天的作业。第125条是关于我昨天的作业。第126条是关于我昨天的作业。第127条是关于我昨天的作业。第128条是关于我昨天的作业。第129条是关于我昨天的作业。第130条是关于我昨天的作业。第131条是关于我昨天的作业。第132条是关于我昨天的作业。第133条是关于我昨天的作业。第134条是关于我昨天的作业。第135条是关于我昨天的作业。第136条是关于我昨天的作业。第137条是关于我昨天的作业。第138条是关于我昨天的作业。第139条是关于我昨天的作业。第140条是关于我昨天的作业。第141条是关于我昨天的作业。第142条是关于我昨天的作业。第143条是关于我昨天的作业。第144条是关于我昨天的作业。第145条是关于我昨天的作业。第146条是关于我昨天的作业。第147条是关于我昨天的作业。第148条是关于我昨天的作业。第149条是关于我昨天的作业。第150条是关于我昨天的作业。第151条是关于我昨天的作业。第152条是关于我昨天的作业。第153条是关于我昨天的作业。第154条是关于我昨天的作业。第155条是关于我昨天的作业。第156条是关于我昨天的作业。第157条是关于我昨天的作业。第158条是关于我昨天的作业。第159条是关于我昨天的作业。第160条是关于我昨天的作业。第161条是关于我昨天的作业。第162条是关于我昨天的作业。第163条是关于我昨天的作业。第164条是关于我昨天的作业。第165条是关于我昨天的作业。第166条是关于我昨天的作业。第167条是关于我昨天的作业。第168条是关于我昨天的作业。第169条是关于我昨天的作业。第170条是关于我昨天的作业。第171条是关于我昨天的作业。第172条是关于我昨天的作业。第173条是关于我昨天的作业。第174条是关于我昨天的作业。第175条是关于我昨天的作业。第176条是关于我昨天的作业。第177条是关于我昨天的作业。第178条是关于我昨天的作业。第179条是关于我昨天的作业。第180条是关于我昨天的作业。第181条是关于我昨天的作业。第182条是关于我昨天的作业。第183条是关于我昨天的作业。第184条是关于我昨天的作业。第185条是关于我昨天的作业。第186条是关于我昨天的作业。第187条是关于我昨天的作业。第188条是关于我昨天的作业。第189条是关于我昨天的作业。第190条是关于我昨天的作业。第191条是关于我昨天的作业。第192条是关于我昨天的作业。第193条是关于我昨天的作业。第194条是关于我昨天的作业。第195条是关于我昨天的作业。第196条是关于我昨天的作业。第197条是关于我昨天的作业。第198条是关于我昨天的作业。第199条是关于我昨天的作业。第200条是关于我昨天的作业。第201条是关于我昨天的作业。第202条是关于我昨天的作业。第203条是关于我昨天的作业。第204条是关于我昨天的作业。第205条是关于我昨天的作业。第206条是关于我昨天的作业。第207条是关于我昨天的作业。第208条是关于我昨天的作业。第209条是关于我昨天的作业。第210条是关于我昨天的作业。第211条是关于我昨天的作业。第212条是关于我昨天的作业。第213条是关于我昨天的作业。第214条是关于我昨天的作业。第215条是关于我昨天的作业。第216条是关于我昨天的作业。第217条是关于我昨天的作业。第218条是关于我昨天的作业。第219条是关于我昨天的作业。第220条是关于我昨天的作业。第221条是关于我昨天的作业。第222条是关于我昨天的作业。第223条是关于我昨天的作业。第224条是关于我昨天的作业。第225条是关于我昨天的作业。第226条是关于我昨天的作业。第227条是关于我昨天的作业。第228条是关于我昨天的作业。第229条是关于我昨天的作业。第230条是关于我昨天的作业。第231条是关于我昨天的作业。第232条是关于我昨天的作业。第233条是关于我昨天的作业。第234条是关于我昨天的作业。第235条是关于我昨天的作业。第236条是关于我昨天的作业。第237条是关于我昨天的作业。第238条是关于我昨天的作业。第239条是关于我昨天的作业。第240条是关于我昨天的作业。第241条是关于我昨天的作业。第242条是关于我昨天的作业。第243条是关于我昨天的作业。第244条是关于我昨天的作业。第245条是关于我昨天的作业。第246条是关于我昨天的作业。第247条是关于我昨天的作业。第248条是关于我昨天的作业。第249条是关于我昨天的作业。第250条是关于我昨天的作业。第251条是关于我昨天的作业。
We tried to count on Saturday, people came, but it was possible.
I don't know, since hundreds.
On Saturday?
It's not that.
Yeah, Sunday, okay.
Saturday was so nice. Sunday was freezing. But I stood right next to the stove all day. Yeah, we sold twenty gallons.
There we are.
Gallons?
Yeah.
We made it, we measured in quarts. I'll call this regular meeting of the Reedfield Select Board to order at six twenty seven on Monday, March twenty fourth. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is twenty five oh seventy nine, the minutes of our last meeting on March tenth. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion for the minutes of meeting on March tenth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just noticed that question can be instructed, was authorized for a hundred and ten thousand, and it should be a hundred and one thousand.
Ha, okay.
Which I already told them, she's already fixed it.
Perfect. Okay. So we don't have to do them as amended because she's already corrected it.
She's corrected them.
Okay. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Moving on to twenty five zero eight zero warrants thirty seven to thirty eight, that would be Steve, I believe.
Ma'am, so warrants for a total of five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty one cents. Payroll was twenty six thousand, one hundred and one dollars of that roughly, and council payroll was four hundred and ninety four thousand, three hundred and nineteen. There's a bunch of state payments, registration fees for fifty two hundred and twenty eight. And Secretary of State thirty seven hundred and fifteen and twenty one hundred and seven, that's all just pass through money, you know. And then we have the lease payment for the compactor, the last one was made to Andrew Skoggan Bank, that was eighty six eighteen. So that's for the compactor, the transfer station. Then some of the other big ones were twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy two, and I had to ask this because they didn't recognize it as to LJB Incorporated, never heard of them. And that's apparently Gore Palmer's new name, the sidewalk, engineers for sidewalk. So that was, when you see that, if you're like, who is LBJ?
I had a question about what that was.
Who is LJB? Who we pay, we're paying them a lot of money, it's always Gore Palmer, so in disguise. And then another five thousand, three hundred and seventy five dollars for salt. Again, I want to own a salt company how I grow up. And then three hundred and sixty three thousand and ninety nine dollars to RSP thirty eight, that's the biggest one, of course. And then the, I think it's the last payment for Horn, right? No, I'm sure it's the first payment for this year.
It's one of the last, he's got one in April.
Oh, one more, okay, so that's forty six thousand, seven hundred and thirty two for Horn for that. And then again, a bunch of stuff for hauling things away that we don't want. Seven hundred and seventy five dollars to Troyana Waste, eighty five forty to Waste Management, and fourteen ninety six to Eco Main. And then the last big one was thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy one to US Bank Corporate Trust, and that's interest on our bond payments. That's it, that's the story, that's the big ones.
Make a motion to approve warrants thirty seven and thirty eight, sum of five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty one cents.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
That was nice, Steve.
That was. This is time for select board communications, if anybody has anything they want to share right now. Well, this is in the interest of keeping the meeting short. We have no members of the public in attendance here with us tonight online. We have the Winthrop Town Manager, we have our secretary, and we have a blue room, which I think is Chris Sammons.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to all business, item twenty four oh seventy one, draft revisions to the warrant article policy petition policy. We had looked at this previously, like many months ago.
Yeah, I was trying to remember when.
And made some revisions. I think the discussion pretty much centered around, do people get to just ask us for money with a letter for like twenty years? And never have to come back to the town and say, hey, here's what we're doing for you guys. And so we changed that to every third year they need to come and ask. And to the budget committee, because they're the ones who do the discussion, not to us. So is that mostly the changes, Eric?
Yeah, and this one's on me because we had, in December of twenty twenty three, we had reviewed this, and I had it on the January agenda. I had it all marked up in my folder on the, on the computer, and that's where it sat. We had just followed up with those. It was that long, it was over a year. I wonder why it was so long. But we got into a discussion, putting the budget together about those nonprofits and what policy they were following. And the staff reminded me that, well, you guys never finished that, I said, are you sure? And so we look back and we never actually did vote on the final document.
I have to tell you, I saw the year it was last adopted, I was like, wow, we did that like a year or so ago, and then I'm so, feel validated.
And what else did you notice on that year that it was adopted?
Uh, we had a different select board.
Not completely, somebody was still there sixteen years ago. Good Lord. Any discussion on the changes? This counts as our second reading, correct?
Correct, yeah, and the only real changes from the last time you looked at it, if you recall, were some, some language around changing a will to a may and softening some of the tone around what the requirements are as far as who they present to, so we can have some flexibility around that, so.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy for warrant article petitions of independent organizations as revised.
Second.
We have a second by Steve, motion by Dave, I'm trying to help Angelica here on the, she'll be doing, I'm sure, from the tape.
Both, I mean, she's watching now, but she'll, it's always helpful to have the verbal confirmation of the, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Eric, will that go into effect for this year, or have we already received all those requests?
We've already received everything we were going to get, there were a couple of, of increased requests, but for the most part, anybody that had any action to take is taking it. Most are staying flat this year, so we're good for this budget year.
Okay, so we just want to make it intentional, though, that this is going to start next year for fiscal twenty seven.
Yes, and if you want to hear from any of the lake associations, they're all very excited to talk to you, you know, during or outside of the budget process.
We'd be happy to have them talk to the budget committee. I think a lot of us get the information from them because they do publish good written materials.
They do, they have excellent communication, so.
Moving on to twenty four dash oh forty three here, and consider an update on the Fairgrounds project, Eric.
Okay, so about two weeks ago, we received confirmation unofficially, not on a formal letterhead or anything, but unofficially, that the Army National Guard is going to have us on their schedule for work for twenty twenty six. So that was, yeah, it's a very big deal. And it's, it's, it changes the dynamics of where we are in the project and kind of expedites things a little bit. So with that confirmation in hand, we are now very close to the full guaranteed match that's required in order to submit this project to the federal government. We had, if you remember, about a year ago, maybe more, a year and a half, had received confirmation. It was October of the year before, that we would be getting the land and water conservation funds, at least the approval from the state. So the state said yes, but they need to submit to the federal government to complete that process. There are two windows that can happen, spring window, fall window. The spring window, the deadline's coming up at the end of April. And so after some digging and some, some checking, and I want to thank a number of people for their involvement in helping all this stuff happen. Jerry, I think, is on the computer, we've had a lot of committee involvement, but anyway, Jerry had reached out to land and water folks and said, is it certain that we have to have that one hundred percent match in hand in order to submit this to the federal government? And they said yes. So we have, we have our twenty five thousand dollar grant from Quebec Savings Bank, we have seventeen thousand dollars in donations. We have the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars approximately in value from the National Guard. And we have basically five hundred and twelve thousand, a little bit more in the land and water conservation fund. What that leaves us short is somewhere in the range of twenty one thousand plus, we also have sixty thousand dollars roughly, sixty one, close to, in, in-kind labor. And that in-kind labor is not guaranteed if we're able to offset some of that with funding, if we're able to fundraise and do, you know, some project components better, more fully. If you remember, we did pair this back to the, to really bare bones. So there's definitely a need to continue to fundraise for this, but what we're actually short under the technical parameters of our grant right now are, is about thirty thousand dollars, twenty nine and change. And so in, in looking at this and talking about it, the idea came up that, well, if all we need to have is a guarantee of the funds, it doesn't mean that we have to have everything in the bank, I just need to have the guarantees in place. And given the fact that we have an open space preserve fund that has a dedicated purpose of supporting outdoor recreation and open space in Reedfield, suggested that we could use some of those funds to guarantee, or I think I talked to Steve this morning a little bit, what was the word you used?
I just see it as collateral.
Collateral, yeah, provide collateral for that fundraising gap. While we fundraise, and we have, I mean, the projects twenty twenty six timeframe, we'll be doing some work this summer to do prep. But a lot of that can't really happen until this, you know, after probably July, when we have the new fiscal year and when we have the DEP permitting in place, which is still taking place. So we've got six months before we really do anything, a year before we even get to the timeframe when the National Guard might start thinking about this, and probably about eighteen months before we actually have to put any large outlay in for the things that are going to cost us a lot of money, like gravel and materials, because the earthwork happens first. So what we're looking at, I think, is a pretty long horizon for doing that fundraising. And just from my take on this, I think that it's very much a select board decision. I think that financially, it's very straightforward, the money is, you, the board would say, the money's available, we're committing it as a guarantee, and then we're going to backfill with, with, with dollars from fundraising. Where it's not so clear is the politics of it, given that we did say, when we were starting this project, we wouldn't use any tax dollars for this project. I think that this is a little bit of a different situation, given that it's a guarantee on actual use of funds. And I think that it would be quite an embarrassment for our town if we weren't able to raise that money over the next twelve to eighteen months to make this happen. And we're applying for grants regularly, I've got one on my desk now we're looking at, the fundraising hasn't even really started in earnest. So my thought on this is that it's, it's a reasonable ask. I think it's a good use of those funds to leverage and get this project in before things get even harrier at the federal government. There's no guarantee this will even come through, but our chances are probably better now than they will be in six months to a year. So I think there's some urgency here as well. As far as the ability of the board to do this, these funds have already been raised and allocated for that specific purpose. So there's no, no need to bring in any outside authorities, the dollars are there. It's just between you and the voters as to whether or not you want to use these funds to leverage that, that, that effort and get the grant in to the federal government. And that's my piece on it, and I know there's a few people online that might have comments, and I'm hoping Steve and Jerry, if they have anything to add, feel free to do so, but.
Anyone online want to speak to this? Jerry?
I, I think it's a necessary approach with the uncertainty in Washington right now. I think waiting, things will likely get more challenging as opposed to less challenging. So the sooner we can get this proposal in the National Park Service process, I think the better our chances of receiving those funds. So while ultimately, I hope and expect that. So uh while ultimately uh I hope and expect that. Uh, none of the open space funds will be needed for this purpose. I think uh it is worthwhile to guarantee uh the town's application um. Uh, for the project with those funds with the expectation that we'll um not need them. So I would encourage this select board to proceed as as proposed.
Thanks, Jerry. Steve?
I mean, from a select board perspective, I mean, I think it's a it's totally reasonable to use this money for that purpose. Uh, just I do feel super strongly that we committed to do this without taxpayer dollars, and so. I want to make sure that we we say this, but from my perspective anyway, I want to say it that, you know, I really want the fundraising to continue. Um, I think it's part of ensuring that 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 we have support from the entire community and and keeping our word, so I want to do that.
Anyone else on the board?
Mr. Sean, I just want to say, I think this makes sense to me, too, and I just really want us to start having some of that positive press, Eric, that we've talked about. Because I think that's what we've been waiting on to get a little bit more support on fundraising. You know, we've never really had anything about. This project in a positive light about who has been helping, who is interested. Um, so I'd really like us to push that effort as well for.
So Jerry, what's the timeline if we so if this is submitted to the feds by the end of April, that was the deadline, right? Um, do you have a feel for, assuming we have the guaranteed match? Do you have a feel for how long it takes before we get? Because that that would be the really big piece of good news.
So so what we've been told is, and again, everything is subject to change, but. That the process is that if we uh get um uh our commitments to the state, which is the ones that submitted. To the National Park Service uh in early April, so that they can put together their federal package by the end of April. That the understanding is that uh our contract will be approved in this fiscal year. So by the end of September, and that if we don't meet that deadline, there is no guarantee. That um the contract will get approved in this fiscal year. I understand guarantees these days in terms of federal funding are are, you know, less than assured, but. We we can only do what we can do, and that means having um our commitment to the state so that they can submit our full package. To the neck National Park Service by the end of April.
Eric?
So procedurally, I was pretty concerned about this because we get commit to not spending any tax paid dollars, and this would put us at risk of doing that. Regardless of our small non-zero number. But given the timeframe. I think if we decided that we ended up thirty thousand dollars, sure, we could go back to the taxpayers and and make a request. That either project doesn't happen, or we need thirty thousand dollars to make it happen. I I think that's reasonable now. I wrap my head around it a little bit in the timeframe, so.
We can make it a. Adequate on the warrant. The taxpayers can decide what.
But given that we have eighteen months, we we would have plenty of time to do that, I think. If if the worst case scenario happened.
We can commit it as collateral tonight and directly ask them, do you want to put this towards the the Fairgrounds project?
Eric, how much did you say we've already gathered in donations and fundraising?
Uh, a little over seventeen thousand.
And in what period of time has that been?
Oh, it's been about a year, well, less than a year, it's a year in uh June, probably, so.
And we haven't done our big push. We did the one big mailing.
Yeah, it we we've done the mailings, we've done a lot of um little things, but it's hard to um it's hard to to make a big splash. Uh, when the the one of the major components of this, the the uh National Guard component. Um, if that didn't happen, this project basically would would we'd have to take a whole different approach. So now that we have all the pieces, it 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 really gives us a lot more ability and and um validity in making the statement that this is happening. Uh, and we're and we're running full steam ahead with fundraising.
Right, so I I my feeling is if we've raised seventeen thousand dollars without a whole lot for people to go on. Once you can say, hey, on a million dollars, we're looking at thirty thousand or thirty one thousand. To raise over the next eighteen months, and we've already raised seventeen thousand in less than a year. I don't think there's any doubt that we will get there. Just with Sean doing entertainment and bottle drives. So I I think it makes sense.
We also raised uh the twenty five thousand dollar grant from Kennebec Savings.
Yes, so that's true, yeah. So that that is also part of the fundraising. Um, so I was talking about donations that are coming from individuals and uh that type of thing, and and I expect we'll have more foundation grants. Uh, and and I I do think that um uh it will be, we we'll see a lot of donations, we'll probably see more than what we need. Um, I hope, uh because it isn't just about meeting that minimum threshold. It's about maybe relieving some of the pressure on the volunteers, maybe raising the level and quality of the work and infrastructure we're putting in there, so. Uh, and with the costs increasing, it's never bad to have a bit of a buffer either, so. Um, I don't think this is any any way going to hamstring fundraising efforts to say, well, the money is uh is is guaranteed, so we don't need to work very hard. I don't I don't believe that's going to be the case at all, so I just wanted to answer that question because I have heard that uh out there in the world, so.
I think if someone wanted to make a motion to the effect of what Eric needs and say that the intention of the board is that those funds will be. Replaced with donations and the guarantee removed from that pot to another pot.
You said it was twenty nine thousand and whatever.
Oh, um, I'd have to look at the exact numbers, but.
We need an exact number?
No, I I think that um, you know, a a a match not to exceed thirty thousand dollars guaranteed out of the open space fund covers it.
I'd make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve uh. An amount of thirty thousand, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars in the open space fund to use as a guarantee collateral um for um. To to get us to the what we need for a match um for the LWBCF grant.
For the Fairgrounds project.
For the Fairgrounds project.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I don't know if if you should limit it to a dollar amount, honestly, because what if? I mean, why not leave that open? What if we lose some funding? What if prices go up? What if things change? What if we get into things where we're right down to the bottom and we're twenty thousand dollars to it? I mean, why not leave it open? It does fit open space.
Well, I think the intention now is that we're just trying to meet the letter of the grant. So if we get to the point where we're doing construction and we don't have enough money, then we could go to the voters and ask them. Or use the open space.
What I was thinking, my gut, Dave, is that, I mean, I definitely hear you about that. But my gut is that all we really need to do right now is to is to meet the the conditions for the grant, and I feel we can do that because we do have time. To go back and ask, and I feel the smaller the number we can make it, the better.
One thing I will say just on the discussions that that we have a hundred sixteen thousand dollars plus a little bit uh in the um in that open space fund. Um, so now this would account, you know, twenty two, twenty four percent, something like that, what's in there, maybe a little bit less. Um, but uh it's not a sizable portion, but again, the intent is entirely to not use any of it, but. Um, but I I I also, I hear what you're saying, Dave. Um, I'd be fine either way. Um, I I always like more flexibility, but I think that. With what you're trying to do um as a board to not maybe raise too much alarm over the use of the funds, it might be good to just say. We're only going to ask for what we think we need right now. Um, and uh we we will confirm with the land and water conservation fund. Uh, and if uh snow's really moving up there, but uh if we need to come, um if we need to come back. Uh, in April, later in April, and say, well, you know, linen water it wants something a little bit different, we could certainly do that. But I think it's the right approach to try to limit it now. Just to start, but.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Jerry.
And I I would like Angelica to be sure that she includes in the minutes that the discussion of the board was that the intention is to not utilize those funds. But only to have them as a guarantee. That our intention is they'll be replaced with donation money or grants.
Just co-signing on the grant for us.
Sure, okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
All that, thank you.
Angelica chiming in. So thanks, Jerry. Catherine, if I if I could, uh I know we've got some um more old business, but uh do you mind if we look at a couple of new business items so we can move Chris and Anthony along?
So which one is, oh, twenty five oh eighty one?
So we have two. We have the um the the Winter Ambulance um uh workshop, but we also have the um. Uh, the idea of using um uh looking at additional investments for the town.
And is Chris actually there now? She's not in the picture.
She was, I thought.
So I don't have any problem if the board would like to consider doing the uh the workshop part with the town manager from Winthrop now? Would that be the board's pleasure? Anthony is online. Are you there, Anthony?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Awesome. Okay, so um we got the spreadsheet in our packet and Eric has spoken to us about this, so. What can you tell us?
Well, I've been the Winthrop Town Manager since June of two thousand and twenty three. And during my first budget process, I wasn't um confident. That we had a concrete methodology for figuring out our revenue from our ambulance service. And so I started uh after that process to explore. Uh, some different options that we might use, and the city of Gardner. Uh, operates an ambulance service that's much like the Winthrop ambulance service in that it serves not only the city of Gardner, but some surrounding communities as we as we do uh in Winthrop. And um I just had the sneaking suspicion that uh Winthrop taxpayers were subsidizing service in other communities. And I think the good folks there in Reedfield can relate to this because you share a transfer station with the the town of Wayne. You allow their residents to use your your facility, and you want to ensure that your taxpayers aren't subsidizing. Uh, solid waste removal for uh for the folks in Wayne. And so the methodology that the city of Gardner has used for several years has uh, it's a proven theory. It's uh it's it's been good not only for that city, but for the for the member communities in ensuring. The financial stability and sustainability of its ambulance service. So as you've seen from the uh spreadsheets, you're essentially looking at a fifty fifty split after we, you know, account for the amount of money that we will actually collect in billing. Which is only a fraction of the cost of uh running an ambulance service between per capita cost and call volumes. We looked at some other methodologies, but we thought this was the fairest way to do this. Plus collecting uh uncollectibles from each uh community, and you as you might know. Uh, uncollectibles run really high in in ambulance service. We just lost our ambulance chief. Uh, his last day was Friday, and I really wish he were part of this discussion because he's much more well-versed in uh in ambulance billing than I am, but. What you may or may not know is that an ambulance service doesn't bill unless it transports. So, you know, God forbid that someone in your community should suffer a heart attack. The Winthrop ambulance service responds, resuscitates that person, and they refuse to go to the hospital. At that point, we drive away and there's not going to be any billing uh with that call. We only bill if we tran- if we transport someone to a hospital. And that's in keeping with what insurance companies expect, including Medicare and Main Care. Medicare and Main Care only pay for a portion of the actual cost of the service. And insurance companies follow the lead of Main Care and Medicare. And then, of course, you do have a a portion of the population that is uninsured, and so those are your uncollectibles. Things that we're never going to to see uh any revenue from after transporting someone uh to a hospital. So um anyway, so after calculating this, we met with the town managers uh and select and a few select board members. Of the communities that we serve, and knowing that this was going to be an increasing cost for all of the communities. We decided and agreed to phase this in, so this first year is seventy five percent of the cost, and the next year would actually be one hundred percent. To put it into some perspective, uh Reedfield's cost for ambulance service in FY twenty six will be about seventy six thousand dollars. Which sounds like a lot of money because it is a lot of money. But if you compare what we pay here in Belgrade, where I live, we're paying Delta thirty five dollars per capita. And if Reedfield were being cha- charged that same amount uh by Delta, you'd be paying ninety one thousand dollars as opposed to seventy six thousand dollars. At one hundred percent, Reedfield would be paying a hundred and one thousand dollars. But it's rumored that Delta's going to be moving that per capita cost up to fifty dollars, as much as fifty dollars next year. And if that were the case, and Refilled uh Delta was serving your community, you'd be paying a hundred and thirty thousand dollars as opposed to a hundred and one thousand dollars. The cost of, one of the one of the first disagreements I had with our uh with our ambulance chief is, the first thing he told me was. You know, essentially, I'm running a one and a half million dollar business. And I said, with all due respect, you're not. You're running a public service because your business. Loses five hundred thousand dollars a year, and no business would stay in business if that were the case. And part of the reason why is because ambulance services, in addition to never recovering the cost of the actual service, are tremendously expensive. I mean, you're talking about twenty four, seven, three sixty five staffing for two ambulances plus two administrators. Our paramedics earn anywhere from thirty dollars to thirty three dollars per hour. Advanced EMTs from twenty six dollars to twenty eight dollars per hour. And EMTs from twenty three fifty to twenty five dollars an hour. So, you know, these folks are are well-paid because they provide a vital service to their communities. Uh, in fact, uh because our chief just recently resigned, I actually approached. Uh, a very talented, hard-working paramedic on our staff to see if she would be interested in applying for the job. And she said, no, she wouldn't, and one of the reasons why is she enjoys making more money than the town manager does. And the town manager in Winthrop is, you know, fairly compensated at more than a hundred thousand dollars per year. Ambulances cost about four hundred thousand dollars each, stretchers cost thirty five thousand dollars-ish. And cardiac monitors cost thirty thousand dollars. So all of those things sort of factor into the cost of the service. Uh, I feel like the communities that we serve have gotten a great deal for the last two or three decades. But now it's simply time that every community must pay its fair share to ensure the sustainability and viability of the service. Uh, and to ensure that, just like folks in Winthrop aren't subsidizing service in Reedfield, that folks in Reedfield aren't subsidizing service in Manchester. Or Mon or Wayne. Uh, or any of the other communities that we serve, so that's that's it in a nutshell, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, um, this is Catherine, and I need a little bit more on the numbers. Now that you've given them all to me, I'm trying to find them in the chart.
Okay.
So um I see the population, I'm just reading in the top chart, is twenty five ninety seven, and our per capita is fifty thousand-ish.
Yes.
Um, and then we've got this fifty percent usage, three-year average. And we go across with that, and we get a total base of ninety two, three fifty four. Where does that base average in to this conversation?
So if if you look at the very top of this spreadsheet that you have in front of you, you see that the proposed budget for the ambulance service in the coming year is one point seven million dollars.
Yes.
And from that, we subtracted the amount that we anticipate getting in uh billed revenue, which is nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Leaving a net budget to be covered of um seven hundred and forty six thousand dollars. So what we sought to do was to break, was to divide that number equally between your per capita fee and your usage fee. So so once you you take that number, three hundred and seventy three thousand dollars, divide it by the population. You can s- that yields what your um what your per capita cost is.
Okay.
So the usage cost is your call volume over a three-year period, and we decided to to do that over three-year periods. Because, you know, one year you might have a number of calls that spike, another year, you know, you may have very low a call volume. So it's meant to sort of even out the experience over three years. So you take that same number, three hundred and seventy three thousand dollars, and you see. With the number of total incidents that we've had. three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and you see with the number of total incidents that we've had over that three-year period, Reedfield accounted for eleven percent of those incidents. So you apply that eleven percent to three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, you get forty-two thousand dollars. That plus your per capita cost of fifty thousand dollars yields that ninety-two thousand dollar figure.
Gotcha. So we're gonna pay that this year or not?
No, no, ma'am. So, so in addition to that, if you keep moving over to your right, you see that's the average of your uncollectibles. So we're using a figure of a hundred thousand dollars for our collectibles. Over the three-year period, Reedfield accounted for nine percent of that cost, so that's another nine thousand dollars. So you add that nine thousand dollars plus your ninety-two thousand dollars, and that yields you a total in the chart below, the grand total column, of a hundred and one thousand dollars. But as I said, knowing that this was going to be a, an increase for all of the towns involved, we wanted to make it as palatable as possible so that everyone could plan for it. And so you will actually be charged seventy-five percent of that one hundred and one thousand dollars, which yields you a cost of about seventy-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, is that number somewhere, is that in the second chart?
No, ma'am. It's actually not in this chart, but, but again, if you took that one hundred and one thousand dollars, divided that by seventy-five, it would yield seventy-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars.
And so that's our share for this coming year's budget?
Yes, that number is budgeted already in the budget. So the budget committee's talked about this, looked at this, so we've moved it through that part of the process. You know, they, like you, had some questions, but it is in the budget as it stands.
Okay, and then next year, we'll be looking at that number changing to a hundred and one four seventy-three?
Well, it, it will be it because what will happen is the cost of the service will likely increase next year over that one point seven million. Hopefully, hopefully, well, I mean, it increases year over year, right? And, and most of that cost is related to wages, and we have a collective bargaining agreement with the union that represents our paramedics and EMTs. We hope to have that nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will be even greater than it is this year, so that will help to offset some of that cost. And so you'll go through this same exercise, plus the three-year average on your call volume and on your uncollectibles will change because you'll be looking at a different three-year period. So it'll be somewhere in that neighborhood, but it won't be exactly that.
Okay, and the uncollectibles aren't actually Reedfields or Wayne's or Winthrop's? It's a percentage based on population, and we've just divided the uncollectibles up. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, no, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. Let me take that back.
Percentage by town. You do have that separated by town, the uncollectibles.
Yes, we do.
Eleven percent, I think we had.
Yeah, so you look at the number of uncollect, so those numbers of uncollectibles in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, those are actual numbers from Reedfield. So that yields your average of, or your total of nine hundred and six, or, excuse me, the average is nine thousand, six fifty-five, and that represents nine percent of the total uncollectibles.
Okay, so those numbers in those three years are actual uncollectibles from Reedfield?
That's correct.
Whereas the line above it was much less. I know there are fewer people, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, Fayette is the smallest community that we serve, so yes.
Right. Well, Fayette and Wayne. Okay, so I'm just gonna go with this chart, and next year it's gonna be another twenty-five thousand dollar hit. That's okay. I shouldn't say hit, increase.
Somewhere, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. And, okay, anybody else on the ambulance?
Pretty obvious.
Okay, well.
Honestly, you can't really argue.
Costs or costs?
Explain mathematics, and when you think about it, to have an ambulance right there for a hundred thousand dollars a year, I mean, we spend money on a lot dumber things. I mean, it's too bad that it's all at once, the increase, but it is what it is, and I don't think that's an unfair cost to have that service.
That's super well laid out. It's really clear, and yeah. Any problem, really.
Jaren?
I, I think I do struggle with the methodology a little bit. Just, just looking at math, I think this skews it Winthrop's favor. I think it skews it all the supporting towns' favor.
In what way, Jaren? Tell me.
You know, you look at the spreadsheet, which is very well laid out here, and it says that Reedfield was responsible for eleven percent of the deficit that that business service runs, and now we're being asked to pay significantly more than that eleven percent. If we have the numbers, if we have the data for averaging it over a three-year time period, why does the per capita make any difference whatsoever?
So if I just hear you right, Jaren, you'd be advocating maybe for a higher weight on the usage and less on the per capita, is that?
That is, that is what I'm saying, yes.
Okay.
You're okay with it evening out in the end, but the formula, because the formula changes year to year depending on your usage.
Correct.
And so the idea then is that the towns that use it more will pay more because they're using it more.
Yes, absolutely, which on this one is, we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars. It's not a huge, huge number. But when you go to dispatch, it's, it's very skewed in Winthrop's favor, which I know we haven't gotten to, but it is, it's not a small number.
Well, I will say this as far as including the per capita. Those populations represent potential calls, opportunity that we may have to respond to any community. So it just makes sense that, for instance, if Reedfield is, you know, for all practical purposes, what, two and a half times as large as Wayne is, that it's likely that it's going to have two and a half times the number of calls. Now, that may or may not bear out over the course of three years, but in that regard, I do, I mean, I consider this to be a sound methodology. I mean, one of the things that, one of the things that we actually looked at was at the insistence of Fayette, we looked at the model, I think, that you used for your transfer station where you took into account what state valuations are. Frankly, frankly, I was skeptical of that from the jump, simply because I don't think that that plays any role in the provision of ambulance service. And, and because we do have these hard numbers as to the number of calls and the number of uncollectibles in each community, it's a little different than, than, you know, you folks don't know exactly how many people from Wayne are using your transfer station or, you know, how much of the tonnage of solid waste that they're, they're creating. So in that regard, I, you know, is this perfect? Probably not, but I, I do think it is sound.
And that's, that's why I struggle. Like you said, we have the hard numbers in the spreadsheet in front of us, and then we're only accounting for fifty percent of that. I just think that number is too low, and I think it skews it Winthrop's favor.
Well, I think it skews it in Winthrop's favor because in the past, Winthrop has been paying more than its fair share for the service. I think it's been, Winthrop has been, and I think the, the proof is in the pudding right here in this spreadsheet, that Winthrop has been paying and subsidizing service in other communities. And as you can imagine, our taxpayers don't like that any more than your taxpayers would if they were, if they were subsidizing service in Monmouth or, or Winthrop or Fayette.
So if we're doing a course correction, now's the time to do it. I just want to make sure we do it appropriately.
Understood.
No issue with Reedfield bearing its fair share. I just want to make sure that the methodology is something that we're all comfortable with.
Did you give any consideration to actually just billing each town for their uncollectibles rather than doing a percentage or an average?
I suppose that, I suppose that we could do that, but I don't, I don't know that you'd be able to plan for it as well as you can with this methodology.
Yeah, it's very, it's variable to a huge degree, year to year.
Well, you still have a flat fee for the service, so you're saying bill a flat fee and then in addition on the uncollectibles? Is that what you're saying? Or just bill solely on it?
Well, if you have a town.
They have to get a flat fee for having the service.
Absolutely. No, no argument there, but if you have a town that's much wealthier than another, I'm going to make the grand assumption that they will have fewer uncollectibles. And so.
I don't, that's necessarily true. I mean, like, you know, it's just the uncollectibles come from not transporting, right?
Right.
So.
And not paying too. I mean, there is, there is the not paying, yeah, some not paying, but it's, it's not.
There is a not paying component of that uncollectible, correct?
Yes. Yes, it, it's both. As the gentleman said, it's, it's non-transports and not, not collecting anything at all.
Right. It's too bad that's the system. It really should, that when you respond, when any ambulance service responds, they get a payment.
Well, so if you folks are interested, I happen to serve on the Legislative Policy Committee of the Maine Municipal Association, and that is one of the bills that we are supporting and had put forth before the legislature is to change that model so that you bill for the service that is provided, not, not simply because you transport. Now, that would only affect Main Care because Medicare still wouldn't accept those, those claims, but at least it's a start in moving towards that direction, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Jaren, for your input, everybody. Let's go and look at the, I'm trying to move my screen here, it doesn't move, at the dispatch.
Yes, ma'am. And, and this is the same methodology as before, just without the uncollectibles. So the, the cost of the service is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Split that fifty-fifty between a per capita usage and, or per capita cost and the usage, which is the call volume from each community. And so, you know, the exact same methodology, and you can see that your per capita would be twenty-seven thousand and change, your your usage is, is five thousand dollars and change. That yields a total cost of thirty-three thousand dollars, but we're only going to be collecting seventy-five percent of that this year, so a little less than twenty-five thousand dollars for FY twenty-six.
So where does that deficit lie then, when you're, you're not billing for twenty-five percent of your actual cost? Is Winthrop just absorbing that twenty-five percent?
Oh, yes, ma'am. This year, we certainly are.
Okay, and does this, is this dispatch for everything, including the local police that's provided in Winthrop and Monmouth, which the other towns don't partake with?
Yes, and so as a result, you can see that the cost to Winthrop and Monmouth are much higher because you're right. We're not only dispatching for ambulance and fire, we're also dispatching for police in both of those communities, which is why, you know, Winthrop's fees are two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars compared to Reedfield's of, excuse me, Winthrop's fees are actually going to be two forty-seven this year compared to twenty-four thousand dollars in Reedfield.
Well, it is what it is, right?
I'll just repeat what I said last time. I mean, according to this, we're about three percent of the usage. We're going to be asking to be paying almost sixteen percent of the service. So that's more than a five times multiple, which is I have a hard time wrapping my head around that being a fair methodology.
Say that again, so we're three percent of the.
We're three percent of the usage.
Right.
And we're going to be asked to pay fifteen, sixteen percent. And I believe that's for this year, so next year we'll be significantly more. So we'll be paying almost somewhere between fifteen and probably twenty percent of the service and receiving three percent of the value, if you want to put it in those terms.
Anthony, where did the total base come from? If we're looking in the top, I know it's in both charts, but at the very right of the top chart.
Right, so that's the net to be covered. It's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So so if you just add all of those figures together, that gets you to your four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And how did we come up with that figure coming across?
Okay, so, so with Reedfield, again, your population, so what we did is we split that four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in half. So we're gonna, we're gonna recoup fifty percent of that or two hundred and ten thousand dollars through your per capita fee. So it's the same exercise before.
Right.
You take the, you take the, the per capita of, excuse me, the per capita total fee of two hundred and ten thousand dollars, divide that by your total population, which is nineteen thousand dollars and change. That yields your per capita cost of ten point six one, then you apply that ten, ten point six one to your population, and that yields your twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay, so Jaren. Right. So Jaren, your point is doing the fifty percent, capital fifty percent usage?
Right, I, I feel that I feel skews it in Winthrop's favor significantly.
I guess, Jaren, I hadn't necessarily looked at it in quite that, that way, but, but, you know, I am thinking about it more, and Anthony's always been open to discussion around these things, and I'm speculating, we're gonna be fine tuning this over the next couple of years possibly, but it does kind of raise the question about that population base when this does cover the entire service, including the police dispatch for Winthrop and, and Monmouth. So that piece of it, that fifty percent, there probably is something in there that I'd like to look at. Maybe not this year, but I think it's, it's worth considering whether or not that the same formula makes sense in this case. Anthony, we hadn't even talked about this because I, it's the first time I'm really thinking about it in that way, but I think it's something to discuss.
We're open to, we're, we're open to ideas.
I mean, it is eighty-nine percent of the incidents are in Winthrop and Monmouth, which has the police dispatch also. And so it does seem like that going back to the usage part, that's, that could be an issue. I guess I'm okay with this if we're open to evaluating this after we look at another year's worth of data and hear the discussion from all the towns. If everybody's having the same sorts of thinking, then there's something more to it.
Yeah, so, so I don't have to tell you guys this, but Eric's a really smart guy, and I don't mind sitting down with him and seeing if, if we can find a formula for FY twenty-seven and beyond that's maybe more reflective of the service than, than what you have here.
I do appreciate the fact that you went to Gardner as an example who has a similar service. There's really no sense in reinventing the wheel for everything we do. And it gives you some good beginning, some good base to structure your, your system on.
Well, and, and they are central Maine like we are, so it's not as if we're looking to the southern Maine, for instance, to, to serve as a model for this.
Right.
So I, I will work with Anthony to look at that, that formula a little bit. Also, I mean, we've talked about this extensively a couple of different times, and, you know, a couple of other points that I want to make, then hoping to continue to look at are whether or not it's possible to, to improve the, the service and get an ambulance back to the Reedfield Fire Station. That's probably a long shot bid because of the demographics and there's the distribution, but I think it would certainly help soften some of the impacts of this and help get service, you know, seven minutes faster, five minutes faster to us and the outlying communities that are on this side of the, of the service area. So that's something I wanted to bring up, and also, you know, of course, I, I do wish that the numbers were lower, but I understand the, the, the approach and the need to make adjustments because I would not want, as Anthony said, to have Reedfield, you know, subsidizing, you know, Wayne or Fayette with the transfer station or, you know, another town in, in that way. So those things make sense to me. And the other piece of this is that the uncollectibles, I, I think, are, are something of a stand-in for, for capital assessments. I think that when we get that information about what the capital costs actually are for this service, it might cost us more. I don't, I don't know, but I do want to make sure that when we start looking at uncollectibles, that, that if we those are basically an operating revenue. and, uh, or, or a, a, an unaccounted for operating revenue, so we haven't been able to, to capture, but, uh, I do want to see us look at the capital costs and, and have a, a real discussion about what those costs are, because like the transfer station, we, we do have a pretty good cost accounting there, uh, we know what our, our lifespan is for our infrastructure, we update it every couple of years, uh, and then we prorate that and, and break it out under the same formula, uh, th- that, that we're looking at, um, for, for other transportation costs. So in the end, uh, we capture those costs on an annual basis, uh, and adjust that accordingly, so I think that's a good, a model, um, a- and, and I, I want Winthrop to be made whole for not just their operating cost, but their capital costs, uh, and I will, I will be more comfortable once we see those capital costs. Uh, Anthony said that he'll work on that with the new, the new ambulance director, so, uh, I think, I think we're good there.
Well, and, and, uh, and to speak to that last point that Eric just made, um, those decisions will be made above my pay grade uh, by the elected officials in our community, and so one of the options, though, is taking the, that uncollectible revenue and putting those in capital reserves to address those capital needs.
Um, Anthony, just to a point Eric made a minute ago about possibly putting an ambulance backup here, how many ambulances do you have in the service?
We have three, uh, one serves as a backup, uh, we have two that are, uh, fully manned, and, um, uh, and that reminds, so, uh, Eric knows this about me, but you folks don't, my, um, I spent the first twenty years of my working life as a journalist, and one of the beats that I covered, uh, in this, in the city that I covered was, uh, City Hall, and I had a grizzled old city manager once told me, we can do anything we want, it just takes money. And so if, and so if we're going to, uh, if we're going to staff a third ambulance, you're looking at even greater cost, uh, uh, at that point than you're looking at today.
Right, well, so looking at the, you, the number of incidents back on the ambulance, you've got four, eleven, and six between Fayette, Reedfield, and Mount Vernon, which is twenty one percent. So it would be really unrealistic of us to think that you're going to park an ambulance out here where only twenty one percent of the people could be served, well, of the calls, um, versus having seventy nine percent in the center. You, you just wouldn't put an ambulance here unless you had more.
Uh, we'd have, we'd, we'd have to, we'd have to be creative about the funding for that, and, you know, and then at that point, that ambulance might not be, be staffed twenty four seven, um, but, uh, but it would, it would result in greater cost for the communities that would be served by that ambulance.
That's great.
Creating cost money.
Well, maybe if we become a community of all older people, people will want that, but then they may have less money, so then they won't want it, so there's no happy medium, and I think it works fine having the ambulances right in Winthrop, they're central, everybody knows where they're coming from.
And it's cheaper than, uh, having our own ambulance service, certainly.
Oh, my goodness, can you imagine outfitting?
Like I said, for a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and what you were saying about delta costs, we don't want the delta costs, um, so. We good? Thank you very much for, um, doing this, I want you to know, I called Eric and said, Ant, are you sure Anthony's going to come tonight? Well, he called me at five thirty this morning and said, I'm going to do this on Zoom, so, I'm glad you didn't have to drive out here.
Yeah, me too, it took me an hour to get from, uh, Winthrop to Belgrade this evening, so.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, thanks very much.
Good night, folks.
Appreciate it.
Do we have Chris Sammons on live? We do. Anyone object to us going to Chris's thing next?
Definitely do it.
Okay, this is twenty five oh eight one, additional municipal investments. Hi, Chris. Oh, you're not, you're muted still.
But, I, I mean, I can get started on this really quick.
Okay.
Um, just give a little bit of background, uh, the, the, the first, uh, page in your, in your packet, you've seen uh, in the past as part of the budget discussions, right? Uh, and that's our monthly checking account balances. Um, and as you can see, um, we've, we've had highs and some lows, uh, those are fairly predictable, they come with when taxes are due. Um, but over the last few years, um, as you go from the, um, the, the red, orange, yellow, green, blue, violet, um, you go from older to newer, um, and for a while there, we had three or four years where we were building, 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 um, and we get to the, just starting getting into the blues, uh, and then all of a sudden, uh, we dropped by a significant amount, and that was when we put the first million dollars of investment into CDs, uh, and SEDARs, so, uh, the reason, or one of the main reasons for that big drop, um, that you see there is because we pulled money out of our checking account and, and moved it into those, uh, kinds of investments. Um, as you can see, we still have, uh, you know, uh, one, one point, um, two million dollars on average, uh, even at the low points, um, and so that means we have some capacity there. Uh, we did talk about this with the Budget Committee, uh, and one of the things that was suggested, uh, and I'll, I'll credit Marty Hennis for this, was to do a bit of an, an a- analysis and say, well, what's a worst-case scenario, say that, um, you know, if you look at the ne- next page, we take those, um, reserve balances, and then we take the expenses from the month that follows, um, and we subtract those, and what does that look like, what percentage, um, uh, of, um, uh, of our current balance would be accrued to, uh, uh, expenses in the following month if we had no revenue coming in. Uh, so it was the, uh, you know, a kind of creative way to look at it, it's hard to say exactly what that means, but it does show that uh, on average, um, we have around twenty, um, between twenty five and thirty five percent, um, depending on what you're looking at for actual balances, uh, available, um, that, that's utilized every month i- if we took this model and put it into effect, uh, and, and what that tells me is we've got a few months, basically three to four months uh, worth of, um, a buffer, if we had no revenue coming in, uh, and that's a pretty healthy buffer, and it was a good way to kind of assess this, uh, and get a little, a next, the next level of confidence, uh, because it was easy to put a million dollars into investments, um, and basically realize fifty thousand dollars in revenue over the course of the year, that, that was a really positive thing for us. Um, but things are tight, um, and the Budget Committee did discuss, uh, the idea of, of possibly investing more of those funds. Um, and so we've been thinking about that for a little while, we talked about it much more at the last meeting, but, uh, in the, in the past, we've also talked about, um, investments that are not CDs, that are not federally insured, uh, that are maybe a little bit more, uh, higher yield, but, uh, more risk. Um, and the, the, one of the products that we came, uh, back with after talking with our, um, some of our investment partners, kind of that wealth management, uh, was the idea of an, uh, an ETF, and, uh, these were new to me, um, and, uh, what I wanted to present to the board tonight were just two options, uh, one would be looking at an ETF, uh, which might have, uh, you know, potentially a six percent yield, uh, on average over the last several years, um, uh, maybe a little bit less if you go back, uh, ten or so, but, uh, recently it's been okay, uh, as an option. Um, and then also provide some CD rates that we just got, uh, today, actually, after I talked to some folks. Um, so, I, I wanted to present these options, and I wanted to ask, I asked Chris, uh, because she does this, uh, pretty much for a living, uh, to give me her thoughts and the Select Board her thoughts on the ETFs versus the CDs, uh, and just have a, a different perspective than, than just mine, so. How's that, Chris, for a start, does that work?
Okay, sounds good. Well, ETFs are like mutual funds, they have, they're made up of multiple securities, and the one you're looking at is a bond, so it's made of a bond securities, and they try to offset that with some other stuff, because when bonds go up, this, the Dow goes down, when the down, the, the market goes up, bonds go down, so they're trying to make it so it doesn't go all the way down or all the way up. The only problem is, it's, is a security. It can lose money, and right now, the market is very volatile, and, um, you would not be assured that you would keep your principal. Why in a CD, the only thing you could lose is if you had to take your money out, would be your interest. So it's not a, it's not a thing you want to put funds into if you can't afford to lose them.
So if we're looking at a possibility of six percent there, but you had Northeast come out with four and a half percent um, in a SEDAR, it doesn't seem for one and a half percent that the risk would be worth it in a volatile market.
That's exactly right, and that's, that's.
If it was a five percent difference, then maybe, and it wasn't so volatile, I mean.
Either way, I don't feel like it's our money to play, to play, uh, to gamble, so.
Right.
I- it's different if it was my own money. Then if I lose it, it's my problem, but I don't feel, I feel like the town's money is not ours to gamble, so. Putting it in a CD, like Chris said, a guaranteed thing, you can't lose, I mean, this, there's no harm in that, but anything that we would lose a dollar on, I don't feel like is responsible or right for us to do as a board.
I don't even think it matters, even if it was not just one and a half percent, five percent, it's still not sure.
Even if it was twenty percent.
That doesn't make me comfortable.
Right, it's not as to risk.
If it was Dave's money, I'd be glad to use it.
Right.
Um, so I think we have stated our opinion on that, so with that in mind, um, we have quite, so we have some in three-month and some in six-month, is that just to keep money available so that we have it to pay our bills? Is that what we're doing, really?
Yeah, we're, we're having money come and go, um, and it gives us, uh, off-ramps, uh, at regular intervals. Um, and, and the good thing is about the CDs, again, um, if we have to off-ramp, um, unexpectedly, we, we might lose a little bit of interest, but that's it, uh, and so, um, uh, what, what I think I, what I, what I'm recommending uh, is that we definitely, uh, look at the CDs as a preferred choice at this point, uh, and if you look at the next, um, the next page that's in your packet, it, it's that, that schedule that we talked about, um, and, and I've added in some columns, um, you've all seen this before, uh, but if you look at that from, from, uh, April of, of twenty twenty five, we've got April, August, September, September, October, uh, February, March, March, May, uh, June, we have a really good stack right now, and if we need to have mon- money, uh, taken out, we can do it without risk, um, of, of losing that interest, we have a lot of, um, um, opportunity there, so I, I think that there are a few things happening, uh, one is, we could really use the money. Uh, two, we have the money, and a lot of it is, in, it's not just money that's sitting there and that we're porting, um, so we can invest it, this is money that's here for cash flow, it, a- about a million dollars of what we have is actually um, just for the, the dedicated reserve accounts, things like the building reserves, the road reserves, all that stuff, so, um, that money, you know, can be put to work, should be put to work, uh, as long as we can maintain that fluidity that we're looking for. And so I, I guess I see a few things coming together here, um, need and availability, uh, and the rates are still really good. So my, my recommendation is that the board, um, you know, authorize the investment of, of, of that, uh, you know, additional five hundred thousand, um, and that, you know, this is a bit more work for me to keep an eye on and for the board and for Teresa, but I think that it's a necessary evil at this point, um, not that making money's evil, but, um, I, I'd like to see us pursue this, because I think it's the right time, and it will help us in the future, so.
I agree, yeah.
I like the spread of months, and I like it that there are three that come due in May and June, which is your lowest month in your cash flow schedule, because it's just before we commit taxes in August, and they're due in September, and it's a low time, so if you need the money, it's available without losing the interest.
Yep, and we could pull it out and put back in four hundred thousand instead of the five, or put back in
Right.
uh, two hundred instead of two hundred and fifty, if we needed to just get a buffer for a few months, um, over, and then, and then put it back in, so. That is the nice thing about this, is, is it gives us that control, um, as long as we're paying attention, which, um, you can see from the spreadsheet, we, we pay pretty close attention, so.
Eric, what would you, what is your goal for revenue, fiscal, like for, during a year? If we do an additional five hundred thousand?
So, uh, the total goal, and we'll talk about it with the budget a bit more, um, is, uh, seventy five thousand, I'm looking to, to come in right in that range. Uh, we've already exceeded that this year, but we also had, the way our bonds were stacked, we had a lot of stuff come together, uh, and it worked out really well this year for us, but, uh, my goal for FY twenty six is seventy five thousand, and I think that's very much attainable with this. It's not quite a guarantee, but it's pretty darn close.
Do you need anything from us?
Uh, no, just a nod is fine, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll proceed, um.
Does everybody have a nod?
I can nod to that.
There were five nods here, let that be noted.
And I really appreciate Chris taking a look at this, answering my basic questions about how this stuff works, and she even went the extra mile and showed me some, um, um, uh, multi-year and multi-month, um, uh, sp- spreads, uh, graphs showing how these, um, ETFs have tracked. Uh, and it's been really interesting to see, because, uh, five years ago, it was a much more of a steady curve, and then all of a sudden, it started doing this weird zigzag, and I said, neither one of those really looked that appealing to me. So anyway, thank you, Chris, I appreciate.
Thanks for doing this, Chris.
Okay, uh, do you want to continue with new business or go back to the budget?
Uh, well, right here with, with, with revenues, so maybe, maybe we go back to the budget, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go back to item twen- twenty.
Being a timekeeper is really tough today, just.
Twenty five dash oh six oh, consider a draft, um, of the town meeting budget and warrant, and is this primarily a discussion about funds, budget amounts, or is it primarily about what's being grouped together and how it's read?
Yes.
The, all of the above.
Th- th- this can be, this can be, uh, as in-depth or, or as high-level a discussion as you want, but I, I, I want to present a few basic things that are, that are the, uh, changes from the last time we talked, but it's important to note that, that we're at the point now where we're looking at actual dollars, uh, we're looking at the warrant structure, uh, and the articles as, as they're intended to be presented, uh, less any additional input from the Select Board, Budget Committee, or public, um, so we do have uh, another month or so to really iron this stuff out, but, uh, in order to make that timeframe work, we have to be ready right now uh, to have this discussion and to have this information available for you folks to review, uh, and ponder, um, a- and, and do what you want with it, I mean, a lot of these are standard fare, but, um, I, I guess what, what I wanted to point out first is that uh, the, the warrant is in the packet, that's the most concise form of the budget. Um, if you look on the town, on the website, I did also post the detail reports for, um, uh, for the, um, the detail and the summary sheets, so we have everything from, uh, the most, uh, fine-grained detail, every, every single account, all the way up to the warrant articles, which are the most condensed version of this, so, um, this is the first really full, true picture of the budget, uh, and I will, um, I'll just run through a very few quick changes um, that, that have been made, um, first, the first two are, uh, significant, but also not really relevant, uh, and that is, I've, I've adjusted, uh, as close as I can, the actuals for the county and school budgets, based on what they have currently for numbers, uh, they're also at the point where they're getting very close to having a final budget, uh, so what we see likely won't change much, the school budget, I think, is more firm than the county, Catherine can talk a little bit about the county. Um, but those numbers are there, uh, and they have, um, the school budget's less than what we had originally budgeted, but it's still a, a big impact, still a quarter million dollars roughly, uh, and the, um, the county budget is more than we thought, but still, uh, you know, uh, as a percentage-wise, it's smaller, so the ta- the dollar impact is smaller, but uh, they're, they're looking at about fifteen percent for the town of Reedfield, so still, still a fair amount. Um, the, the other changes that have been made, uh, include the, um, the factoring, right? So every year we talk about factoring, and whether or not we need to factor our rates, uh, our values in order to keep up with what the state of Maine says, we have to keep our values at, um, and you've all heard me say this before, that, that the House always wins. Um, and this is the case where, um, what they, what they force us to do decreases what they have to pay us. Uh, and it's, it's not their intent to shortchange us, I don't think, uh, but it's just the way the, the, the.
I wouldn't be too sure on that.
It's just the way the, the, the law was written, uh, and what we have is we get twenty five thousand dollars of exempt value, and they reimburse us seventy six percent of that, right, so there's, there's layers here, but they re- reimburse us seventy six percent of that twenty five thousand dollar value, and whenever we factor, we have to increase our values, that lowers the mill rate, right, and so then the, the value of that twenty five thousand dollar exemption goes down, and what we get back goes down, and, uh, thi- this year, um, again, the markets are starting to stabilize in some places in the state, I've talked to the assessor about this extensively, uh, but Reedfield and Kennebuck County are not one of those areas, we're a, a, an in-demand community, we have a great location, we have high-value real estate, um, a- and we've got good roads. I'll just put that in there too, but. And great schools, we're not seeing the same slowdown that other areas of the state are, we're still on that peak, on that curve, uh, and so in order to keep up with state valuation, what we have to look at is a twenty five percent factor. Um, and that's an escalation, we started off at, you know, ten, fifteen, fifteen, you know. And that's an escalation. We started off at, you know, ten, fifteen, fifteen, you know, over the last five years and now we're at twenty-five. Dave and I believe this will be the last factor before we complete the revaluation process. And then we'll have a baseline readjustment on everything. The values likely won't change much from what they are now on a, across the board scale. The, the revaluation, the purpose of that is to make sure that people are being treated equitably. So there will be some, some reshuffling there, but it'll be more about how much, you know, different community areas have increased relative to other areas, inland versus waterfront, things that are on a major corridor versus things that aren't. And even housing types, the two-bedroom versus the four-bedroom, how have those changed? So that's separate, but that, that factor changed the mill rate, but it also changed the reimbursement, which, you know, unfortunately, we have to do this to keep up. Otherwise, we lose money. If we don't meet that state threshold, they say, well, we're only going to pay you at, at eighty-five or eighty-two or seventy-two or whatever it might be of what our actual assessment is relative to their, what they think it should be. So again, that's where the house wins. You know, we can't, we can't just say, well, we're not going to factor and you guys can just pay us less because in, in the net, that actually costs us more money. So a lot, a kind of a pieces there, but what I'm getting at is that even though the cost of what we were doing stayed exactly the same, the tax bill went up like one percent because of what happened with all of that factoring that we're on the hook for. So that's, that's two of the three of the big pieces. The other thing that happened.
Can I ask you?
Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
Is the factoring you're talking about when we're doing the ten percent adjustment to valuation?
Yep.
And what did you say this year was going to be?
It was, it, this is going to be twenty-five. And I'll say we started at ten percent. We went like ten, ten, fifteen, fifteen, twenty last year and this year we're at twenty-five.
All right, because on page eleven in the budget.
Excuse me, fifteen then twenty-five.
Okay. All right, it was ten, 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 fifteen, twenty. And on page eleven of the seventy-six in the budget documents, it says it's fifteen percent for this year. So are you telling us that you have now changed that to twenty-five?
Yes, so that, that, that is a, not a linked cell. So thank you for catching that, Catherine.
I've become an expert at this, much to some people's dismay.
No, it's, it's great. So, so the, 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 all the dollar values, that's a manually entered cell and I just hadn't updated it. I started this year thinking we'd be able to get away with another fifteen percent, but, but we can't.
So the good part about this, I think, is that when we have the revale finished, people are not going to be that far off from what they are because of what we've been doing.
That's exactly right.
So it's not like you're going to go from a two hundred to a four hundred jump in one year. We've been going up every year and now we're taking a big jump this year.
Yeah, I think one of the things that people lose their mind about that don't, that don't quite understand, it, it's the same amount of tax dollars we need to collect. It just means the mill rate would be smaller, you know, per thousand. So it, it doesn't change because the value of your house went up. It doesn't mean you're paying more taxes.
When you're paying more taxes on your tax bill, it's because we're spending more for local government, county government and school funding. It's not because of the change in the value, which is very hard to understand.
Yeah.
And it's all contingent on what the state isn't paying for. I'll just reiterate that.
This, this is true in, in a lot of cases, yeah. And especially with the county, and I harp on the county budget a little bit, but it really does, and I, this became even clearer to me at the training I was on Friday, that, you know, the, the biggest part of the, the budget, and Catherine can, can confirm this, i- is the, the police and the jails. And the state doesn't pay for more than, they don't even pay for twenty percent. It's, it's some minuscule portion of the cost of those services.
A year or two ago, they put in a jail funding bill and they asked for a specific amount, which was X percentage. And I think it was thirty-five percent. And so that is what gave us the funding. So they're only paying thirty-five percent, but we're housing mostly people who are going to go to state prison. Right? We're housing them for the state. This isn't like these are county inmates. They become county inmates. So what they did for this coming year budget.
Now when you say they.
What they, the state did for this coming budget is instead of funding the percentage that they said, they took the dollar amount. So let's say it was fifty thousand dollars was thirty-five percent. So instead of sticking with thirty-five percent of what's needed, they're sticking with the fifty thousand. But the cost now is like two hundred thousand. Those are not the numbers. The, the correctional facility for Kennebec County is over fourteen million dollars, just for Kennebec County. And what the, the county correctional facilities together went was asking for fourteen million dollars in, in state funding to be that thirty-five percent. And so what the governor put in the budget was four million. So amongst all your counties, they have to make up ten million dollars.
So that's a big part of what we're facing.
And so, and you can't not fund that because it's mandated by law. And this is what I'm saying, the state's not paying their fair share. So they agree to something and then they kind of do it.
They find it somewhere else.
Well, yes. And I won't even get started in the politics of it. So there's a bill currently that is being presented to change the four million that the governor asked for to seven million. It's, which would be half of the fourteen that the counties together said are needed from state funding for the jails. And that may or may not pass. And just so you know, Tavis Hassanfuss, representing Reedfield, is one of the sponsors. He's the Democrat and there's a Republican sponsor. Together they're asking for that. And the more emails they get on that, the more likely that that may go through. And who knows when they're actually doing this, but there's all kinds of shenanigans going on with how they're passing budgets and timing of things being implemented and so on. So, and they're legal shenanigans, but they are shenanigans. So there's not a lot we can cut. Last week, we cut about one percent of the county budget. And then we found out there were going to be multiple increases in things that weren't yet presented to us. And so I've been trying to advocate for more long-range planning in budgeting, in contracts, in projected salary increases via steps or cost of living, so we can project out having a capital plan that includes everything, because their capital plan is about that many lines. And here in Reedfield, we have two pages. Now, they only have six buildings and they don't have roads. They don't have a transfer station. So, but I mean, with huge old buildings, like the, the correctional facility was built in the eighteen hundreds. Hill House, the big municipal government building was, it's not municipal county, was built in like nineteen oh five. So these buildings require a lot and they did take millions of ARPA funds and repaired those buildings. So we're not going to have to do that, but I'm like, you still have to put those in your plan. So we're trying to get the commissioners to make some more planning so that at least we can know more, say like what Anthony did tonight. Okay, so here we are. Next year, probably plan on X and the year after Y.
So if I remember like what you have told us in your service with the county now, is that the big issue is why it's gone up so much the last couple of years, it's just not a lot of forward planning, a lot of.
It's primarily the, the funding for the correctional facilities. And then, yes, and there are weird things like software programs expire, they kind of reach their life cycle. And then you go to the next iteration and the cost goes from twenty-five hundred to thirty-eight thousand annually. It's kind of like what happened to us with Trio. You know, we, we paid a fixed price for having it in our server. And now when we're going to it online in the cloud, there's a whole different cost. And the, the sheriffs just came out with a ask for an eight dollar an hour increase, which is over thirty percent because they want to be brought in line with others. And, you know, that's just, I can't imagine it will get approved. But if it did, it would be millions because you've got so many people and the, the correctional officers are asking for another seven percent. They got fourteen percent last year. They have seven percent this year and they're asking for another seven percent. And I'm like, some of us have been talking, we need staffing studies. Are you utilizing staff the correct way? Who are you, who are you comparing yourself to? Are you comparing yourself to a coastal community? That, a county that has a whole different makeup and, and a wage structure, because we can't compete with Cumberland County, right? Or York County. We can't compete with the Bangor County, whatever one that is. Penobscot? Thank you. And so, you know, there's a lot more information that has to come together. And then we're finding things like the county commissioners make some of the contracts. And so if somebody has a, say, ten percent wage increase, it's not negotiable by the budget committee because it's already been decided. And, you know, that's something we struggled with here in Reedfield, which comes first, negotiations or budget. If you do budget first, then they know what to ask for, so of course they're going to ask for that. You do it the other way around, it could be dangerous depending on how you negotiate. And you have, yeah, so it's complicated. I expect we will cut at least another one percent, maybe two this week and that'll probably be it. So I don't know how that affects Reedfield, but it shouldn't be any higher than it is now.
Well, that's good to know.
And I imagine it will go to the commissioners who will most likely put it back, although every vote we've had so far is unanimous. And if it comes back to the budget committee, it has to be, we have to override it by two-thirds. But if every vote's at a hundred percent, the override would certainly be at two-thirds. So I don't think they'll come back, but they may. So that's my update.
Okay, so the, the next couple of things I want to talk about very quickly are things that the, the board does have control over and fit into some of the discussions we've just had around investments. So if you look at the page seventeen, again, as Catherine was mentioning, of the packet.
The packet or the budget?
Of the, excuse me, of the budget, of the budget material, sorry, of the budget materials. You have the, the, the updates. And so after I did all that work on, on getting the factoring and all that straight, I did increase that revenue line for, for investment income. So that is showing, I guess, seventy-six thousand. I said seventy-five, but it brings it up to seventy-six. And the question was what to do with that and how to, how to work it. Now, we've also been talking about the Salt Sand Shed and where that project stands. I, I'd let you know earlier that I don't feel comfortable at this point going out to bid or, or even putting in money for a bond or a warrant article or anything like that without having better information. And so I did remove that ten thousand dollar bond interest payment from the budget. That helped. But then the question was, what, what do we do with this kind of surplus? There's this, the small gap that we've created with that thirty-four thousand dollars. And, and my suggestion, and this is needs board input and, and, and direction on, is suggest that we put it into the road reserve so that we can use it to pay for some of the design cost for the salt sand sheds. That way, if we want to in the next few years, we can put it out to bid because we'll have a design. If we talk with engineers and it turns out that we don't have, or that they want some ungodly amount of money for the design, maybe we don't do that this year, maybe we wait. But if we wait, we still have money in that paving reserve that can go towards an already lean account, right? So it's not in a bad spot if that's where it ends up. And also, that investment income, if it, if it, if it is used to help offset the investment cost or the design cost, then next year, we won't have that design cost again. We'll have that kind of able to be used for something else. And that's not a bad number to put in towards the likely twenty-five thousand dollar increase we're going to see on the ambulance and dispatch services. So it, it's, it's, we're, we're fighting for every inch here. But I think that by taking this approach, we're going to not under budget. We're not going to put the money in a bad spot. And if anything, we put ourselves in a good position to have a few things worked out next year and ready for next year that we wouldn't have otherwise. So that's my thought on this and I'm, I'm happy to hear the, the board's feedback on it.
Mr. Shaw, I would just say I'm glad you took the sand salt shed stuff out. And we thought that, because after that conversation at the last meeting, I was definitely like, we got to really talk more about where we're going with this, especially with those weird numbers. So this makes sense to me.
I can't remember if I brought it up at the last meeting, but where do we get our salt from physically? Where does it come from?
Uh, it comes from Canada. And it comes from Canada down to the coast. And then, then I think it's, I think it's by barge. I'm not, I don't believe it's trucked. I think it comes on a container ship. And then it comes about an hour from, you know, Belfast or someplace like that to Reedfield over, by, by, by truck.
So it's too far away for us to go fetch it instead of storing it? That's what I was getting at.
Oh, yeah, especially when.
Dave gets big trucks.
We get a lot of trips.
Guess who would never haul salt, wet salt, you know, whatever, in, in their trucks.
Nobody like calling Paul.
Right.
It's.
Okay, it was a bad idea. I just had to ask.
Hey, it's worth asking, right?
So we have to have some sort of a sand and salt shed.
We do. And the one we've got now is probably good for ten or fifteen years and there probably isn't going to be an issue. But at this point, we, we've talked about it enough. I think that we need to be prepared to act on something if there was an issue. I mean, there could be an issue. I can't guarantee that it wouldn't be, but I think it's really important for us to have a cost, a, a, a design so we can get a cost estimate if we put it out to bid and then we'll know. So say we get the, the design and it comes in and we put it out to bid for, for FY twenty-seven or FY twenty-eight. And it comes in and, and, and we, then we know what we have to, to bond, right? And if we don't have those pieces in place, we can't get to that process in a way that gets us to where we need to be to have the money available. Without a special town meeting, we could always do that, but that doesn't seem like the best option.
So if we have an incident that causes it to need to be replaced, we can handle it then, once we have all these other pieces in place.
That's correct.
So we can use it till it drops, essentially.
Yeah, hopefully it'll like drops, but you know, almost drops.
I mean, it would give you some time to plan out for it and, you know, maybe bond less or no money if, or whatever the case might be, if we could put that money aside. That would be even better, but being prepared for it, like Eric said, then just wait till it falls down and then go, okay, let's build something today. Much better approach. And I do have some feedback. I'll talk to you about some numbers to call about some contacts for different building designs and options to.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. I mean, I, I had to look at it again. I took, I went and I went, looked, I looked at the slag blocks. I looked at construction costs we've seen. And I, I don't see how we would come up more than half a million.
That's figuring out a hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot for bare bones building.
Yeah.
Nothing, no insulation, no electrical, no nothing.
Yeah.
But.
Just a big sand pit.
Well, you know, it's one of those things too, I've talked to some of the guys that, because I'm looking at it going, why do we need a bomb shelter? You know, anybody in their right mind would only push off one wall. But unfortunately, we live in a time when nobody's responsible for their own stupidity anymore. So you have to build it. Right, you gotta build it like you're gonna put a six-year-old on the D nine in there. I mean, that's how you're gonna build it. So, I, I mean, they're probably engineering it that way. So that, you know, what is it, twelve-foot thick walls that you couldn't put a, you know, an A-bomb through the side of them or something, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's not quite that, but it's, it's two feet anyway.
It's overkill.
It's two feet anyway, yeah. And, and, you know, but there's, I looked at a few different designs because we did reach out and get, I got some designs from a few different towns and sixty by a hundred and twenty is a pretty standard size. And, but they were talking, I mean, again, anywhere from twelve to fourteen foot, top to bottom. Rebar, you know, every six inches and it's not small stuff either. And it's, it's a lot. I think we can probably do better than what they're suggesting, but that's only for the next couple of years and then we're going to have to see prices go up.
Concrete's the most of the cost on that.
Yep, yeah, yep.
Could we consider going smaller?
I think that would negatively impact the contractors and, and the town. I think we'd be paying more for the inconvenience factor. For the inconvenience factor. Right now, what we've got is holds about twenty five hundred. The sixty by a hundred and twenty would handle between. Around twenty five hundred to three thousand with a little bit of room to mix inside, which again is kind of a requirement. So I think that we're about. Where we want to be, especially because we, I've seen, again, looked at three or four of these and and John. From the road committee just sent me several from DOT that I'm gonna look at. But I think that that's a pretty common size. So. We don't want to make it hard so that the guys have to be mixing sand twice or three times over the course of the winter. Because the pits could freeze up.
I don't think the, it wouldn't save you a whole lot of money in the end. I mean, the whole, you know, it costs this much to build the building, the trinket twenty feet isn't gonna. It's not really worth it. It's gonna be peanuts in the end.
Actually raising enough, putting that thirty four thousand dollars, I do wonder if we want to go up just. Marginal amount, just give us a little larger buffer, because we don't know the timeframe of this. It might be tomorrow, it might be ten years. And if we did just a small increase, I think that might be easier on the taxpayers.
What's small for you?
Make it around fifty, just this year, add a mature sixteen. I think that would be a marginal increase, the average taxpayer. And would just give us a little bit more capacity. And if we do bond it in five years, then we have. Fifty thousand dollars instead of thirty four. And if we can do that over the next ten years, as Dave was suggesting. If we could avoid bonding it all together, if we front load it.
So you're talking about making that a recurring cost? Was that your intention?
Not this year, but um, but but I see what Jaren's saying. I think he's 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 right, that if we were putting money away. That would be helpful, but I also think that it's it's a. You know, we're basically Robin Peter to pay Paul no matter what we do, because we know we're gonna have a twenty five thousand dollar increase coming next year. So if if we did that and made that recurring, it would be. That dollar amount plus the twenty five as opposed to softening it out. But but that's a long term. We can talk about that, whether we want to put money up front for this, as we tried to do before, but then costs escalated and we ended up eating into it. Or whether we want to just plan on bonding. But I think, you know, Dave had said something similar about, well, maybe we don't want to bond, maybe we want to save and and bond less. I think that's gonna depend a little bit on what what money's doing, whether we can, again, whether it costs more to bond or whether we can make more money by keeping it in the bank. And it's right now, you know, bond interest rates are probably three and a half percent. Money we're making and money on on investments is is four and a quarter. I don't think that's gonna last. I think in two years we back down to, you know. The cost of borrowing exceeding the cost of of investing or the benefit of investing. Right now, it's it's the reverse of that.
So is this really something we should discuss in the CIP discussion in November or December?
I mean, yes and no. If you if you want to start by looking at this year and adding more money and just to buffer it. I mean, honestly, I think fifty thousand dollars to design this thing. If it's not just a slag block, if it's a waste block structure, we still have to pay for the design, it's probably still gonna be fifteen or twenty thousand just for that. Because we'll have to design the arches and all that stuff. But for an actual concrete design with rebar and all that, I I think it might be closer to, you know, thirty five to fifty. So I it's. Even this is on the edge, so I appreciate what Jaren's saying about maybe increasing that a little bit, but.
So you're talking about getting an actual design done so you can get bids, so we'll know more firm numbers for next year?
Or or whatever year. Yep. And and this one, I think, is, we will have to talk about it again in in a few months and 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 once we. Get some things squared away and figured out, but I I think that, you know, we might want to wait a year, we might want to wait two, I don't know. But. I I do want to be prepared. I don't want to wait too long because, again, lifespan of this is unknown. Ideally, we would not bond this until after the next bond's paid off, but, you know, in in the grand scheme of things, that that next bond. That gets paid off is only gonna add like ten or ten or so thousand dollars to our capacity. It's not a big bond. So but it would help. So so I guess you could approach it two ways. You could either. Or or add it right now, you know.
Twenty thirty bond is. Expires this about sixteen thousand.
Oh, sixteen, sorry. It was seventeen, not seven. So so seventeen thousand, but if we have to bond a million dollars, that's, you know, about twenty percent of what that might be. It would help, but it would. It wouldn't cover it in a significant way, you know. If it was a five hundred thousand dollar bond and we put fifty thousand dollars away for it for the next five years, that'd be different. That would actually help quite a bit.
I kind of think I'd like to wait and see what the revow comes in as and what the hit's gonna be to people in their taxes. We know that's coming up. We know. I can tell you right now, the county tax will be going up again next year. There's no way it won't. And we know Winthrop's going up for ambulance service. And we know that the cost of living is gonna go up at least probably the same as this year, four percent. So.
It it's a tough discussion.
I'm just as happy leaving it at thirty four for now and and then talking about it more after you get some more information. Just my thoughts. I I see what you're saying, Jaren.
But like, is the last thing I'll say about this, we can go back to the actual warrant articles is, you know, that that training I was on Friday, someone had a great. Phrase about municipal government budgeting. It was, you know, are we in the business of cost or the business of value? In this board, I think I've seen very much, you're conscious of cost, but you're in the business of value. And that's where we should be as municipality. And that's why these discussions are hard is because, you know, we know what we should be doing, what we should be investing in and what kind of services we want to offer. But we also know that, man, it's a lot of money. So just a thought that, you know, what what is it we're looking for? Are we trying to save money? Are we trying to provide value?
Do we still have housing being built in Reed Field?
A little bit here and there. Yep. It it's not the pace that it was, but it's it's still happening. It's just.
If we stay. I don't know what the word is. People are still wanting to come here and we keep increasing by a few more houses each year. That will help. Because that increases the tax base, so we spread it out over a greater number of people, then you can do more things.
You you can.
Or you can just keep up with the inflationary costs without making it rise for each person.
Well, you can't do that. And here's why. So the the what we see is an increase in value on home values overall is between a half. And like one and a half. I think the highest I ever saw was like two percent during peak post pandemic building and and growth and all that. So, I mean, we're talking this year, I'm I'm projecting and Dave's pretty much online with it, three quarters of a percent. When the school budget goes up four and a half percent and inflation goes up three percent and it's just impossible. It helps soften the blow, but it. It'll never make up for it.
Okay, so back over to the actual warrant. Did anybody have anything reading through it? I have one, if you don't have any. So the one I came up with, Eric, because we talked about it almost ad nauseam over the last year or two, is the capital reserves. And that's the only capital one. Is that correct? That's Article twenty eight.
There's Article thirty five as well, which is related to capitals. It's, that's the.
Trust funds.
Trust funds, yeah, use of of funds. And so.
I don't think most people are concerned about what we're doing for trust funds. In terms of wanting to single them out, but we had said that we were gonna try to keep anything new, would be separated. I don't think there's anything new, or is the administrative tech a new thing?
The use of that fund is new.
The threshold, which was, we talked about ten thousand.
Yes, so that's, that was gonna be my point. So you've.
So I'm trying to be really transparent here. Cemetery's not new, equipment reserves, fire department, roads, buildings, transfer station, none of that is new. And I think that was our criteria, right? New and more than ten thousand? Or was it just more than ten thousand?
Well, we talked about a few different parameters.
Dave saying, I think we need to look at that each year. You know, we don't have to have a cut and dried policy. You know, if it's if it's new. And it's not a big, you know.
Nobody has a problem with it.
Then that's fine, but if it's new and it's a hot issue, then we.
Avoid avoid controversy.
And it's, if it's capital, it shouldn't be any less than, I mean, I'm not even sure five thousand is really. Is this like for cemetery and administrative tech? Is this because we're putting five thousand away that we're not going to spend?
So this, this is a raise inappropriate. So this is money that's going into those accounts, basically replenishing them. Taking money out of the tax base, putting it into those accounts. So that's what these lines do. So the five thousand for admin tech. It's it's really a a a in net zero dollars because we're taking five thousand dollars out ultimately, but we want to show. That money's going into these accounts. So there's, it's it's more of an actuarial kind of demonstration in some cases, like. The administrative technology. In cemeteries, that's actually less than what's coming out because they're using trust funds. To help offset it. But. Things like roads, that's that's at least what's gonna come out. So it it really depends. And it's it's sometimes hard to see exactly what's happening, but. This this does show what's going into those accounts to help offset expenditures or to buffer for the future.
What you just said, that needs to be in that explanation note.
It will be, alright. Angelica's got that for me, right, Angelica?
Anyone else on anything on this?
Article ten, what? I see, you know, all the breakdown, it's sixty eight hundred for conservation. What what is the sixty eight hundred dollars that we raised for?
So that is for things like. The work at the town farm forest, they do trail. Even though we have a trails committee, it's a bit awkward because there's kind of a split responsibility with the actual infrastructure. So for properties that are managed by the conservation or at least under the, under the supervision. Of of the conservation commission like the. Torsey Pond Nature Preserve, right? Yeah, that's one. The part of the cost there is a couple thousand dollars to replace bridges and things like that. So there are a lot of little things. And and the way to look at it is a little bit of, it's for programming, a little bit of it's for invasive management and. And just maintaining the properties themselves. A little bit of it's for the infrastructure that we have on those properties. And Jaren, did I miss anything? Does that cover it?
I I think it might just be worth noting that they're usually close to a net zero. With the harvesting that they do at the downed forest. So, well, it may look like. It's sixty eight. It's kind of like rec where they actually bring in.
I'm looking at P P five in the detail. They've got an invasive vernal pools for seventeen hundred. On Town Farm Forest for, I'm not sure if I'm in the right year. I'm in the wrong year.
That was grant funded.
Right, so it's twenty two hundred for the vernal pools and twelve fifty for the town farm forest, two thousand in materials, a thousand for signs.
It seems to me like that there's. A whole bunch of different numbers that probably kind of go to the same stuff. Like conservation, town properties, those kind of the same thing. And the trails is kind of lumped in there.
They're they're not necessarily, and part of this is how we have things structured, right? I think ideally, I'd love to have a parks and rec department that managed everything and it was all, this was all subdepartment stuff, right? But we have independent committees that we have vested with authority to oversee or, I mean, manage or or just to. Assist with management of different components. And and so conservation, you know, they do have some standalone authority. The town properties, most of what goes. That includes is things like porta potties, right? Four thousand dollars in porta potty costs there. So that doesn't really necessarily belong in conservation. It's more dispersed. We also have a number of properties that are not, and again, this is where I think we have some failings. The beach is one of the most important conservation lands we have, but it's not really managed or even looked at often by conservation. It's much more, the the rec committee has had that responsibility, but again, they don't really have an interest because they're doing exports. So you're absolutely right, that there's a lot of things mixed in here and it's not ideal. But this is the best, I guess, balance we found, given what the different responsibilities are and making sure that we. Try to put similar things together, if that makes any sense.
The trails budget is three quarters for granite and gravel, gravel and sand.
Lot of volunteer, the people on that committee specifically, they do a lot of volunteer work.
Do my properties, anything that's owned by the town, I mean, is that, is it kind of an automated thing that are. Governed by the conservation committee? Is that how we're set up? Law or or it just happens that way?
I don't want to get into the law.
Kind of figuratively speaking.
Yeah, it's it's, the state law allows for the formation of a conservation commission. To support the select board in managing conservation lands or support the town. Part of the reason we're looking at the open space plan is to help maybe clear, more clearly define some of those roles. And I think it's a really important thing. Again, I I I always bring up the beach because I think, well, here's this thing that's really important from recreation and conservation perspectives. But neither one of those groups really has an interest in it. And it's it's been a struggle to kind of take that on. You know, in in the town administration, because we want to see it cared for, but where does it belong? And so I think that looking at how we treat our municipal properties is one of the charges and it is one of the things. That I hope the open space committee can come back with a recommendation on. I don't know, Jaren, is that something you've talked about at all, about how we distribute those responsibilities or?
Really haven't gotten to the recommendations. There's been a couple, just like maybe we should consider this as a recommendation, but we're, they're really not at the recommendation. Stage, but I think they're really trying to light a fire under it.
Get us down too much for rapid. Twenty minutes of agenda items left.
It's a good discussion for them. Another great example is the fairgrounds. And that that lack of clarity caused some conflict a few years ago. So I think it's important for us to look at that question, Dave, absolutely.
But before we go on, Sean, very conscious about the time, but just one thing that you said, Eric, I think is, you know, it'd be nice if we had like a rec board that kind of. Looked everything all together, but I think we have to really look at, I agree, we have to look at this, but I think we'd be really careful because. I'm really always impressed at how many volunteers we have. And I think having all those committees. They're kind of unwieldy in one sense, but we get a lot of value out of that with the volunteer work we get done. And I don't want, you know, you don't like jeopardize.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Jeopardize the really large amount of volunteering we get in the community, so.
I'm not I'm not calling for the repeal of any committee.
But I just think that, you know, I would I would love to look at that, but.
I I just wish there was better ownership on that one, but that's just one.
I just didn't notice, do we have, yes, transfer station revenue is only thirty nine thousand?
Yes, so the the, so what you'll see on expenses and revenue for transfer station and code enforcement. Are no longer, and 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 last year was the first year, but this year, it's fully transparent, only the costs, the town of Reed Field show up. If there's, if there's a tax impact for Reed Field taxpayers, that's it, that's all it is. We're not, we're not doing public accounting for. All the other parts of the operation. It's all available. It's all part of our internal accounting, but the Reed Field voters don't need to vote on whether or not Wayne's gonna pay their share. They are and they will, so.
Are we good? Okay, well. Soldier on here. So we're up to new business twenty five oh eighty two, considering municipal association workers' compensation fund resolve. Eric, does this basically mean that we might get a little bit of a money credit if we do what they ask us to?
Absolutely. So this is step two of a of a three or four step process. First step was expressing our interest in saving money. And reducing workplace injuries, also very important. So the second step is to have the select board say, we agree with that approach. Third step is for us to implement a list of scheduled. Policies, programs and just general practices, things like making sure that we have a safety officer that's that's. Providing training annually. Uh, things like making sure that we have, uh, a safety officer that's, that's, uh, providing training annually. Uh, little things here and there, um, doing certain kinds of inspections. Uh, anyway, there's a checklist. Uh, if we reach the first tier, we save five percent. If we reach the second tier, we save seven and a half percent. If we reach the third tier, we save ten percent off of our workers' compensation. Uh, and if we reduce our, um, our cost to the point where we're hitting the minimum threshold. Even then, we still get, uh, preferential treatment when it comes to, uh, grants from the MMA for, uh, uh, safety grants. So it's a, it's a win-win. It helps us do better and it saves us money and helps prevent injuries. So I'm very much in favor of this.
And are we basically doing most of these things already?
We're doing a lot of them already. I think we're pretty much automatically at tier two, so. I'd like you to vote on it and then sign a piece of paper for me.
I'll make a motion to approve the workers' compensation fund resolve format through sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Guarantee that comp rate's gonna go down. I'll believe it when I see it.
They'll probably go up twelve percent.
Yeah, ask every year, why did they go up?
Alright, moving on to item twenty-five dash zero eight-three, discuss proposed ordinance revisions for the town meeting vote. These are all not subject to our approval, right? These are all coming from the planning board.
Yeah, and this is, uh, you know, more of a placeholder and FYI, um, Catherine, you had started discussing with the, the. Planning board the need to review some of these ordinances. And so this is them following through with that request and I guess the direction of the select board as a whole. Uh, that they look at policies that affect land use and, um, make intelligent changes. And so, um, the land use ordinance. Is the core, uh, proposal here, the core set of changes. Most of these are related to cleaning things up for the LD two thousand and three stuff we did last year. Uh, a few other small areas. Uh, and then just moving on through telecom noise standards, solar ordinance and, um, the sludge ordinance as we call it. Uh, those are all just minor changes to just clean things up, make it look better, make it function better. Uh, and so. The, the planning board has put this stuff forward. They're holding their own, uh, public hearings, uh, to make all this stuff happen. Uh, and then, um, they've also had a lengthy involvement of their board members and discussions. So every, uh, most planning board members picked a piece of this and worked on it. Um, and so it's a very collaborative process to date. Um, I'm comfortable with what they're proposing. Uh, and I guess the last thing I will say is that these are all then reflected in the articles for the town week warrant. So we have. Uh, quite a good list, uh, but they're all related in the sense that, um, they have to do with land use. So we've got five articles. Uh, that reflect these changes. And again, uh, I think that everything's very well in hand. Uh, we've already had legal review on most of this because they're working with the town attorney to develop this as they go. So. Uh, I think they're in a good position and I expect these will be positive, uh, changes for the town.
Eric, I noticed that a few of them are really gonna change, uh, the role of code enforcement officer and. In some of them, like review of some of these ordinances instead of them going to the planning board.
Like the little solar things.
The rooftop as opposed to the, yeah.
A lot of sense. Um, they're a pretty busy board as it is, and I don't think they need to be.
And it'll make it quicker for the resident.
Uh, to wait around for four weeks.
I was happy to see some of them, but I just. Yeah, no, and I appreciate that feedback and it does, it fits well too because, uh, we're. What the planning board is also working on is implementing those changes that we had talked about six months ago, probably five months. Uh, to kind of restructure a little bit of the role of the code officer, uh, really improve the clarity of the process. Uh, those operational fixes that we talked about, um, now that they've got this warrant, uh, article language mostly under control. They're starting almost immediately now with implementing that work that we had done in the past. So that fits better because it gives more efficiency. And we have the capacity, um, to handle that on the code enforcement side. So I think it fits together well.
Those who don't watch the planning board meetings, they put a lot of work into this. They really did. Really appreciate their efforts there.
And there's a long list that you and I had made up a year or two ago of all the things we need to update that.
Yeah, and this checks off about a third of them.
Right, so, you know, we don't have things that are fifteen years old since someone's actually reviewed them officially and said, okay, this is still good. And I think several of these were all to be concurrent with state statute. And that's what we need, right? Cause that just gets us into problems when we go to review things and the president is like, oh, no, I don't think so. Uh, is there any other business before the board tonight? I bet there's one item. Is there a second?
Oh, there's an FYI on Spirit of America.
But that's been published, publicized that that, right?
It is, but I guess the, 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 the request here is that the board.
Hey, everybody, the spirit of American nominations are due by April seventeenth. Please check that out.
If, if you guys know anybody you think is deserving, uh, uh, pitch it.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Yes, from Dave. All those in favor. We are adjourned at, oh, darn, eight twenty-seven, eight twenty-eight.
Recording stopped.